Student advisor to the Board of Education. Again, the Board asked me to put together a draft. Obviously, this is a first draft. We did receive some comments on this. I'm trying to find it. What page is that on Board Book?
Fifty-four.
So below is a draft regarding the timeline process. This is the MOI submitted to the Board. This was based on the information I pulled from the other districts that have a student advisor, kind of what their role is and how this would work. My thought would be they would attend regular meetings. They serve as an advisor to the Board to give the student perspective, but also it's kind of a dual role in that they're serving as an advisor to the student body of what the Board's discussing or covering and opportunity to share stuff back with the student body. They would meet with the superintendent and/or principal prior each board meeting just to kind of discuss what they wanted to share with the Board or things they wanted to address and prepare a monthly report for the Board on behalf. This is what most of the other school districts that have a student Board member asked that student and Board member to do. The question that was submitted is this kind of similar to what's already happening between the principal report and the Student Association report. This was, again, this is a draft, so the Board can figure this out. You know, maybe that student's report is something not related to Student Association, but maybe some things that they're getting feedback on from their classmates and whether it's in the cafeteria or after-school activities or access to the building on non-school days, things like that, that maybe they want to discuss with the principal and superintendent and find a way to inform the Board on some of those items. So this is all tentative and can be modified as we kind of go forward with this process. A student should be a junior. I'm under candidate now. Student would be a currently enrolled junior, slated to, in good standing, slated to graduate in the spring of '21. They should participate in at least one extracurricular activity. Now, I highlighted the next sentence. Due to the position's responsibilities, the student should not hold another elected office. Some school districts have this in their application process, some don't. So that's why I put it as a highlight to this Board. You can discuss that and determine some of the thought process behind that is if they're an elected official for another Board and they're taking them the way to that office and doing that office with the fidelity that they ran for or went for, we shouldn't be trying to stretch them too thin or have the same people kind of sending out the same message, right? So it gives an opportunity to other students that maybe weren't elected as a class officer or something like that.
So I just have a question then. Prepare monthly report for the Board on behalf of Students at RV. I would kind of expect our Student Council to do that as the idea, at least in my mind, the idea of having a student Board member would be more to be similar to other Board members, and we don't each prepare a report and report out on the constituents that we are engaged with over the two or three weeks that we're absent. Like, we don't each come back and say, well, from our part of the neighborhood, this is what I've heard.
Yeah.
Bring that back. So I kind of feel if we're having a student Board member, they should more mimic kind of the role of a regular Board member and interact with the content here, but feedback from the student body probably should be coming from our Student Council.
But didn't you just say, you heard loud and clear in the election, that we needed to get more information out? So those are kind of constituents you're serving.
But it-
Wes will bring up a lot about-
Right.
-hey, I've hearing this in my neighborhood about the pay to participate or what's going on with...
In context of the situation, but we don't each prepare a report-
No, I'm-
...at every board meeting and present.
Correct, but I think the idea of having this person here was so that there could be a direct pipeline between the student body and the Board of Education, someone to serve as their representative.
We could have a, you know, I think, I think to the question's point, Laura's asking the same question as the question asked, why isn't that the same thing, right? Is that, you know, we have a, you know, I mean, I have a president's report. I don't often report out on things, right? They have a space where they are, but we wouldn't normally, we don't go, we have a space later where we want to talk about things, right? They would have their own designated space.
You may decide, we may have a student advisor report. They may not have anything to report that month, or this Board may decide they'll bring it up for a future discussion item, just like every other Board member does on the agenda process.
Right.
I don't have a preference either way. I'm just-
I don't know, it's just kind of a spin the idea, and we develop it the way we want it-
Correct.
...to be developed.
We might have talked about this last time, but what leadership opportunities besides SAE in this sort of vein already exist? Does Dr. Freitas or Mr. Mannan, don't they have sort of a core group that talk with them about safety and those kinds of things?
So monthly, I host a Principal's Forum. It's open to the student body. I do have, you know, a group of students that come frequently and consistently, but it is open forum. So any student can come. Sometimes I have 10 students, sometimes I have 30 students. So I do provide a space for students, you know, to engagement and bring, you know, their feedback on what's happening at the school. So I have that happening currently.
I'm just wondering, just kind of thinking out loud about how can we fit that, fit this student into what already exists to be that bridge between, like, possibly something that you're doing or Mr. Mannan is doing to the Board? I, you know, I don't know that that's the right, that's the right thing. I'm just kind of thinking.
Well, it sounds like some of the discussion is back to what is the purpose of the individual? Are they to inform the Board of what's happening in the halls? Or is it to become engaged in the Board process and read the packet and, you know, provide, when we're discussing, you know, the enrollment and staffing projections, to provide a student perspective on enrollment and staffing projections? So I think there needs to be a little bit of clarity and then a little bit more guidance, because otherwise you're going to get students who apply for this, who are the kind of students that run for SAE, right? It's something to aspire to, and you can kind of include it in your, in your background. Is that the student we want? Do we want a student that actually has some thoughtful ideas that maybe attends Dr. Freitas' events, but needs to be kind of moved along to say, now, we want to hear from you at the Board level? I think we need to have that discussion a little bit. What are we looking for?
So I did talk to two different superintendents who have high schools, the students on the Board, a student advisor role, and they kind of gave two good examples that actually tie in directly to Deanna's suggestion. It was like they were talking about changing their start time of the school year and finals, changing their final schedule to, you know, before the winter break so that it would line more to... And there was a lot of concern from the Board, and there was like this historic, and they had a heated discussion, and then all of a sudden they kind of said, well, why don't we ask the student advisor? And the student advisor's like, ah, the students would really prefer, like, it was, the Board was kind of like way off to what student feedback was, right? The student was like, hey, we would really prefer to have finals before break so we can actually have a winter break and not have to do homework or be somewhat thinking about what we got to do when we get... And then there was another superintendent who brought up, you know, some, sometimes the discussion we get is, you know, there's, that's why they had the principal kind of meeting before the Board meeting as a filter, so like sometimes if they're bringing stuff that could be more handled at the principal level or the administrative level, that's not stuff that necessarily was reported back to the Board. But if it was something like, hey, we need to reconfigure the CAF or the Board should really consider about maybe spending some money on reconfiguring the CAF so students can get through the lunch line faster and have an actual 15, 20 minutes to sit and eat their lunch. You know, those are the kinds of things I think the Board would want to hear about, right? That if, you know, so those are examples of some of the discussion and feedback I got from back from other soup that, you know, reconfiguring the cafeteria was never anything on the Board's mind or superintendent's mind or even the principal's mind, right? And then all of a sudden, the student advisor brought it like, yeah, we can't get through the CAF and we can't eat lunch, and so by the time we get paid, do all our stuff, we have 10 minutes to eat lunch.
Well, my concern is that second example, that every meeting now becomes a student-driven, well, I think we might like to have this or that. The purpose of the board meeting is to do the district business. At the end, we ask, what should we consider to put on the agenda? Something like that would then have to go through the process to say, we'd like to add to the agenda, you know, how functionality of the cafeteria. But if every meeting becomes, well, we'd like the halls painted blue, I'm just putting that for an example, or different kind of lifestyle or quality of life, so to speak, issues for the school, I would expect that to come through a different forum and then come quarterly or something else, but not every meeting become kind of a quality of-
I don't think it needs to be every meeting. A lot of, some of these schools that ran this don't have committee of the whole, so maybe the student only reports out at our committee of the whole, like I only report out from Wes, so it's not, has to be, it does not have to be every meeting. The other thing, again, I'll repeat, I think that's why that filter piece is there where they meet with the superintendent, principal prior to the board meeting, so if they're bringing up stuff that's, things that can be handled at the building level, some of that can be redirected and addressed at the building level and not even have to, can be resurfaced back to Student Association or his principal's forum and not at the board table.
Yeah, and I would, I would argue that, yes, the Board is here to conduct the district's business, but some of those high schools that I've researched also, I mean, they like have a plaque in their boardroom that says, the kids come first, or it's all about the kids. So I think there is an attitudinal component and a couple of things. I mean, the Student Association, as we've seen tonight at other meetings, I mean, they do incredible work. It's a lot community-based, it's, you know, all the right things, but that's sort of, that's one area of engagement. I happen to believe that, you know, when we had a conversation earlier about teachers and do we have the right amount of teachers in the classroom, whatever, shouldn't we try to utilize everything that happens in the school, including this board meeting, as like a classroom? So I just fundamentally think if we have a student or two here and they participate, it's like, what better classroom could you have when they start to hear how we debate, where they participate? So I see that as sort of a fundamental thing, too. And the other thing, this goes a little bit to the examples Kevin brought up, I believe that we have an adult blind, we, sometimes we have adult blind spots, which has to do with a couple of weeks ago when in October, you know, there was an issue with all of a sudden, students wanted to get engaged in the global climate strike, but it wasn't communicated. That apparently didn't come up in the meeting with the principal, but it was on students' mind because, I don't know, so many of them walked out. It's clearly a blind spot, and we can sit here and say like, oh, no, you know, we, don't worry, kids, we, we got you covered, we do the district's business, but I am convinced that we actually are not doing the entire business of a district because our kids have concerns like that one that was serious enough for them to, to, to accept, you know, an unexcused absence. And so for me, this is quite fundamental in also, if we are to adopt this, it's basically an acknowledgement to the community and particular to the students that says, we want to hear from you and we take you seriously, and to say they want to paint the hallways blue, you know, if they, if they say that, then we'll say no. But if they say we care deeply about our future and what are we doing, are we talking about science? You know, we have a debate about science. We should talk about science and the fact that the jury is out and we're not doing enough, and the students know it. And groups like us, the adults, have failed to act on it, and so I think we have to start being honest about it, and, I mean, I'm going a little bit on my, you know, on a limb here, but that's why I feel so passionately about, let's just invite them in the room so that they can see that we're sincere about this, that we want to hear from them, and all the other arguments about, oh, they're going to ask for blue hallways, come on. That's, that's not the-
I think we, you know, we have to be careful about directing this so much that the kid doesn't, that the student representative doesn't, it's their spot. We can't say, okay, you have to do this, 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 and this, then, then we're just, we're just placing, you know, the most popular kid or the smartest kid or the most liked kid, whoever is chosen, into that spot, and then they're following A, B, C. They need to be the representative of, and I think we'll find that student, you know, over time, you'll find good ones and bad ones as-
Sure.
...as there is in regular public life, but by and large, you'll, you'll have somebody who really cares who's going to have their own forum. They might go to, you know, the principal forum also, but then they might have their own, like outside of it.
But also, I think, in alignment with that, and you can't assume we know what that student's agenda might be. I mean, they could be, they could be on either end of the political spectrum. They could come with any type of their own ideas and concepts, so I think the selection process, which I think is where this kind of discussion was going about, you know, who's reviewing it and what kind of student is kind of best equipped to be a fair emissary of student needs, I think is a really important piece of it.
Looking, looking at structure, I think Gina could share some insight. When they were doing the search for the principal, they had students on it, and there was the structure, similar to every adult teacher, community member, everybody on there, but the students were integrated into the same structure as every other, and maybe you could articulate a little bit about it, but it went pretty well, I think you said.
Yeah, I think in that forum, it went really well. Like, I'm excited about the idea of adding a student to the Board. I think we do have to put a system in place, but I think we probably have to put a system that we think is what's best, and then we have to dive in and have the student join and then play it out for a year, and I would imagine we probably are going to make some tweaks then.
Right.
Like, I, there's so much, we haven't had it before, so we don't know.
You don't know what you don't know.
But I know that every time I've been involved with the kids, that was just one example, they always rise to the occasion, and they completely surprise you with, with their thought process. They really do. Like, I'm excited about the possibility of it, and I do think we just kind of have to jump in.
No, I, and I totally agree with that.
Yeah, I agree.
And, you know, I think that even in terms of the procedure, I mean, maybe, you know, there's a nomination process, I think even as outlined here. There probably should be some sort of teacher and administration test of sort of saying like, yeah, no, this is a legitimate candidate. And then after that, I actually like the idea that the students, that, you know, that there's an election, that the students pick their own representatives, and I would just also offer one or two. I mean, what would be the downside of two, because I know some districts have done that too, and if they came in a pair, they might be a little less intimidated with, you know, microphones and so forth. So I'm just saying, if there's interest and you had two, two strong people, you know, why not add them, and if we only have one, then that's fine also, but...
If we go to the selection process, so the tentative timeline that I laid out was we would advertise the position, receive teacher-student nominations, right? So we could, teachers could nominate somebody and/or the students can nominate themselves, and we'll have an application process. And there would have to be some things, we'd have to make sure they're in a good academic standing. Maybe they have to get verification from all their teachers they're in good academic standing. I haven't laid out the nuts and bolts of that. And then the idea was, you know, go through the process, kind of run an election like Tom was saying, that my thought was let the students kind of pick the final four or six that we interview, so at least they feel there's some democratic process of they're selecting their voice or representation. And then, you know, whether it's the personnel advisory council or this president and the superintendent or the president and the principal, we can have somebody that interview the final four, and we'll come up with a uniform set of questions, and then we can hopefully have this person approved at the May Board meeting, and then their first meeting would be the May Cow meeting, and they would go from May Cow to May Cow, and that would be their term. So what I heard from the feedback tonight is obviously we do, how this will work and the role, we have some time to develop that, where their first meeting's not going to be till the May Cow. But what I'm hearing from all of you is I should start working on the nuts and bolts with Hector, and maybe, I did go and meet with the Student Association. There was, I went to the General Student Association meeting, which is all the class officers and students that are in part of Student Association, so there were probably 40 to 50 kids in this room when I came in and spoke to them last week, Wednesday, I believe that was, and just, I got some general feedback from them, which is how I came up with the, you know, the timeline and kind of the nomination process, and there was some concern like, hey, is someone that's involved in athletics or activities, you know, kind of not being, probably won't be able to do this because if they're expected to be at every board meeting, there's going to be conflicts with maybe some other events or contests. You know, that's, those are all real things, which I think, you know, why that one school district has that language where they're not into another office, or you have to be careful of, because if we're going to do this right and it's going to be, you know, a sincere position where they're going to be a true advisor to the Board, they should be expected to be here at every meeting. So...
Well, I think we'll probably need to put in some, a little bit of training, like all new Board members, we have the Open Meetings Act training, what you can say, what you can't say, and-
They would need that anyway, right?
Yeah, but, I mean, we do that because-
Well, they're a non-voting member.
Yeah. No, but you-
Probably not.
I could check, I could check what the other, I mean, getting, having them do the Open Meetings Act is fine.
But what I'm saying is, when we talk, we are, there are, if we say things that are irresponsible, you can't take that back. It's on TV, it's out there, and so we need to be careful.
Yeah, I think that's-
And we can't have opinions. So when we put, like, you said today, we failed or didn't do that. Well, do we have data to prove that? So we have to be very careful at putting our opinions out there without actual data, and definitely we should never use names.
Yeah, I think we're getting a little too, there's some things I can work on.
Well, but I'm just saying, we want to be careful because what is said and thrown out there can't be taken back.
I think we need to go back to this, is it, is, are the students electing it or are we choosing them? Because I think I'm still a little confused here.
Well, the students are electing their final, you know, depending on how many nominations we would get, we would do some type of election process where the students can vote for, depending on the number that we would get, three, four, five delegates to then be interviewed by the representative or two of the Board and the administration.
So if there's 20 kids that come out, you're not interviewing 20 kids?
Correct.
The kids whittle it down and not you.
So student body president is elected, right?
Yeah.
It is.
Same question. So is the election at the same time? Is this another position on that ballot?
It would be, it's a little earlier, I believe, right? Kristen, Hector won't know, when do we do, like, class?
Uh, April, I believe.
I mean, I would think you would want to keep it all on one-
Yeah.
-ballot.
Well, we, I think it depends if the Board's saying that person shouldn't be on the student advisors to the Board if they're going to be in another elected office.
I don't have that kind of-
It would be just, if you were to, right, so you'd be one more on the ballot, you know, you'd be undifferent.
Yeah, I don't think there's a ballot like where we have a computerized system where people go on a polls and, I think it's a little, I think they go in during their lunch hour and they cast their votes for kids and they have a slate.
Put it in the old thing.
So this, I was going to try to run a little more where I would send an email to the entire student body and say, you know, these six people are running for student advisor to the Board, here's what the role entails. Please highlight, or please click on three names that you feel would be good representatives of the student body. I was going to do something to that.
Like a Google form?
Correct.
But also, don't you think if we, I mean, if it were possible that all nominees get sort of pre-qualified through probably the teachers who know the kids the best, that then when this election happens, that, let's say, the, the student with the highest vote count is basically elected, but the Board or a group or the superintendent and the principal or whoever sort of have, they probably should interview them, but that's more like a, you know, just to make sure that it isn't some other red flag, because if that were the case, you go to the next one. I don't necessarily like the idea that you have an election and you pick four or six, and then the Board sort of picks from that anyway, because I think they should be-
The others, the others come here, and I think it should be they just elect somebody and maybe we make it, make the process of getting elected just like, you have to go get signatures or so forth, hard enough where, you know, the guy isn't going to do it, doesn't really want to do it, right?
Yes, right.
I mean, you ought to be invested with the big, so they're invested, and that might be going to teachers and get recommendations and get recommendations and so forth.
The one thing I was trying to eliminate with, by having the, and I don't know what the magic number is, four, highest vote getter, six, I don't know. I was just giving you a draft, but the one thing I was trying to eliminate is the popularity contest. So it'd just be, if, if, you know, four or five kids run for this office just because someone gets the highest votes, I'm not sure, you know, necessarily they might be the best representative of the student body who's going to have that big picture perspective of, am I making, helping make decisions for all four classes or am I making decisions for what's popular or because I'm a popular, right? Like, when we, when we picked, and my, again, I'm just, it's just, when we did the student or the student representatives on the principal process, we, we used a very diverse selection process to pick them, and their insight was like, and right, so that, that was my only reason of like kind of running elections, so there's a student voice in it, but then there's also, whether it's, you know, the committee could, that does the interviews could be whoever, it could be teachers or Board members, it could be, it could be however you want to do it, but I would just say, you do have to kind of take into effect to make sure it's not just a popularity contest.
It worked very well with your interview process, so that, whatever you did for that, because the students you had on the committee to interview the principal, you thought had great insight and good representative.
Yeah, and we got, honestly, we got some selection from different people. Some teachers gave me some students that they thought would be really good candidates. Kristen, at the time, gave me some students. Dave Manning gave me students. Brendan Curtin gave me students. So I had, I had someone from athletics, I had someone from Student Association, you know, some classroom leaders that we don't, maybe never hear of, right? But that might be a true leader within the school. So that was like, that was my piece of, that was my thought process, I have it two steps there. If the Board doesn't want it, we don't have to do it, but I would, I would caution you as a formal principal, there is some popularity factor that might go into just having an election.
So you're thinking more that the election would be for the student body to choose the nominees, and then whoever the-
Then there could be a panel.
...is, picks the actual person, but the students get to pick the nominees.
Right.
Like, who do you want to be the three nom, you know, right? Is that, that's what you're thinking?
Correct.
Or might you want to get your plausible candidates through the same process you did on the interview body?
That's in there under January, February, where I can get teacher recommendations.
Yeah.
So like, I plan on putting this out to the students, but also to the teachers, so some teacher may go up to, you know, Wes sitting in first period biology and say, hey, I think you should really go for this, you would be a great person because that would be considered, right?
Right, so that's true.
So there are some, there's an opportunity for teachers to nominate people, students to apply.
They have a round corner to it, right?
So I'm trying to cover all our bases where we can get the widest pool, candidate pool as possible.
And you went over this with the students at one point, and they-
Not this draft. I went over what the purpose is, what I'm looking to put together, and what kind of feedback they could give me, uh-
And based on their feedback, you came up with this.
Correct.
Okay.
So when do we need to get a consensus of how to do this? Is that next in December? Because you're starting in January.
Yeah, I would say just by December, like, I mean, if you're okay with this process, obviously I'll, I can tweak the nuts and bolts, but I'd like, so when they get back from winter break, I could send something to teachers that if you have a student in your class and they take a good advisor, you can nominate them through this process. Students can, I'll send out something to the students, they can apply.
But to clarify, you're looking for some firm feedback on concurrent offices, right?
I, the yellow piece is where I need the firm, the for sure, the for-
But even the clause before that, participate in at least one extracurricular activity, I think that's open for some-
Yes, absolutely.
...discussion?
Right. My thought on that was you'd want to eventually, you want to maybe have somebody that's at least getting a different perspective, so they're, they're not just, they're interacting with other groups of students.
I just think-
But we don't have to make the requirement.
Right, my thought in reading that, it lends to that whole time commitment question that the Student Association raised, right?
Absolutely, yes. So maybe some feedback, and I could put this in a Friday update or send a Google form to the Board, just kind of get some more direction on the prerequisites-
Yeah.
-for the candidate. How about the selection process? Is it making sense now a little bit what I laid out? Obviously, it needs to be tweaked, but do you see what I'm trying to?
Yes.
Everybody seems okay with that?
Yeah, teacher, maybe coach, because you have some-
When I say teacher, I'm meaning any adult.
Okay.
Yeah, could be administrator saying, hey, this person would be great.
Okay.
Yeah.
Ramona, what do you have?
You know, like, a lot of times I go to the kids and I, like, one of the things I'm doing right now, I'm having, I'm having a problem, and I'm like, you kids helped me figure it out, what do you think about this, right? I think they're, especially at this age, like, my, my thought is to take this back to that group and say, like, this is kind of what we're laying out.
to that group and say like, this is kind of what we're laying out. What do you think? Right? I came to you for this, for like the pre-work. Now I've come up with this and I don't know, that's kind of, if I was in charge, that's what I would do. You don't have to do that.
Thanks, Ramona, even though you're one of my boss, is that in any direction or-
This one is out there. No, you don't, you don't have to.
Well, really, at the end of the day-
That's why I do it, but I'm okay.
At the end of the day, though, this is really, it still is what the board wants. Because the board, this is really, it's the Board of Education and so they're looking for a student perspective. So-
Yeah.
What, what I'm saying, you know, I mean, like, I, I think there's, the primary direction needs to come from the board. Do they want to have students that are involved in activities that, that doesn't bother them? Do they want to have students that, you know, have so many teacher recommendations or not? You know, that's, if you, if you make the process too tough, you're going to get, you're going to lose applicants.
But you have to make it tough enough to get someone that-
Really wants to do it.
Really wants to do it.
Well, I think that's why having that second step in that, I think by also having that second step in the process, when the, you know, those top three or four or five, whatever number we come up with, based on how many apply, and it may be low the first year, but I think by having that second step with that process and that interview, you'll kind of get the impression of what kid really is serious about wanting to do this and how they're going to approach it, right?